Masque and Semiamu First Nations, I'm Mayor Val Vanenbrook. And tonight with me, I have some council and staff that I will introduce. We have Councilor Paul Ulrich, Councilor Terry James, Councilor Gail Martin, Councilor Nathan Pahal, Councilor Rosemary Wallace. We have our Chief Francis Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer, Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services, Carl Johansson, our Director of Development Services, Bonhof, our Director of Engineering and Parks and Environment, Kim Hilton, our Director of Recreation, Culture and Community Services, Kelly Kenny, our Corporate Officer, and we now have joining us Counselor Restorben. Excellent. Okay. So this public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act in order to consider by law 3159, Official Community Plan Amendment. By law, to amend the official official community plan by law in order to incorporate provisions for higher density, low-rise residential uses at the properties addressed 5394, 5396, 5400 and 5402, 207th Street, and by law 3160 zoning amendment by law and development permit number 07-20. A by law to rezone the properties located at 5394, 5396, 5400 and 5402, 207th Street, from the RS1 multiple residential low-density zone to the CD72 comprehensive development zone to accommodate a six-story, 68-unit apartment development. I'd like to thank everyone for attending this public hearing, which is taking place via electronic means via Zoom. If we encounter technical challenges during the meeting, please stand by as we want to ensure everyone who wishes to speak is afforded the opportunity to do so. This public hearing is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and is also being recorded and will be posted to the city's website. If you are watching and wish to attend this electronic meeting, you can do so by going to www.langleycity.ca to register and join the meeting. At this public hearing, those in attendance at this electronic meeting who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws will be allowed to make representations to council and shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the bylaws. Once in the meeting, you may use the raise hand function to indicate your wish to speak, which will automatically put you in the speaker queue. You will be invited to speak in the order in which hands are raised. When it is your turn to speak, staff will prompt you a message asking you to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Please commence your comments to council by clearly stating your name and street address. Unit numbers are not required. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the bylaws. Your name, address, and comments will form part of the record of this public hearing. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with individual citizens. Once you've completed your comments, staff will mute your microphone. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. I'm asking you to keep your comments to no more than five minutes to allow everyone who wishes to speak an opportunity to do so. Once everyone who wishes to speak has done so, I will call for speakers for a second time, at which time those who wish to speak again should indicate so by using the raise hand function. I will then call for speakers for a third and final time. If there are no speakers, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. The public was also given the opportunity to provide written submissions for this public hearing. All submissions will be retained by the corporate officer and copies of the submissions will be available from her on request following the hearing and shall form part of the public record of these proceedings. Ms. Kenny, can you please advise how notification was provided for this public hearing and whether we have received any correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor, a notice pertaining to the bylaws was mailed to properties within 100 meters of the subject properties. Newspaper advertisements were placed in the April 1st and April 8th editions of the Langley Advance Times and a notice was placed outside of the entrance to City Hall and on the city's website. And we received four pieces of correspondence, all of which have been circulated to council.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Kenny. So by law 3159, official community plan amendment. Mr. Johansson, can you please present the proposed bylaw?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council. I can speak to both the OCP amendment, proposed bylaw, and the rezoning bylaw. So the proposals here on 207th Street involves a six-story residential building with 68 units. And the applicant has tailored their development to the proposed new official community plan or OCP land use designation for these properties. This land use, known as low-rise residential, supports four-to-six-story apartment buildings and has been identified in the draft land use concept for the new OCP since late 2019, early 2020. In order for the proposal to proceed through the process now, the applicant has applied for an OCP amendment to allow their development to proceed through the process ahead of the anticipated adoption of the new OCP, which is anticipated to occur in May of this year. The current OCP land use for this area is medium-density residential, which allows apartments up to four stories in height. The applicant is also proposing to rezone the properties to a site-specific or comprehensive development zone to accommodate the proposed land use. And this new zone is also been tailored after the preliminary draft zone that is being contemplated for the new zoning bylaw to accompany the adoption of the new OCP. And it's also consistent with the urban design direction coming out of the OCP and the draft Nickelmeckel River District Neighbourhood Plan. In terms of parking, the applicant is proposing residential parking amount that's about 4.7% less than the current zoning bylaw requirement. And while technically a variance is not required for residential parking because it's a CD zone, it's important to know that the proposed parking approach is supportable based on the proposal being within a 10-minute walk of existing high-frequency transit and the transit exchange at Logan Avenue and being located within a 10- to 15-minute walk of the planned 203 Skytrain Station as well as the downtown. The applicant is also proposing a minor variance to visitor parking and is slightly below the current rate of .20 per unit. And it's something that is supportable, given that a loading space has been brought into the application to ensure that loading doesn't occur on street. And two visitor spaces have been utilized for that from the initial concept. So the application was received positively at the advisory design panel at their February meeting. And the applicant has incorporated ADP recommendations into their updated drawings attached to this agenda. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this overview.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Johansson. Okay, so I'm now going to invite the applicant to speak to the proposed bylaw. And I believe that's Matthew, you have a presentation. Mr. Chang?
Hi.
Would you like to introduce your staff?
I'm by myself right now.
Okay.
I'm the only one who are presenting today.
Excellent.
I have the landscape architect who is standing by and just in case any questions for landscaping.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chang.
Okay, so my name is Matthew Chang, I'm the architect of this project. The developer is Ensign Projects Limited. Sorry, I just got familiar with the two CS.
It's quite okay, we understand, it's Zoom.
Okay, so, okay, I continue. The site is located along 207th Street between Dr. Crescent and 90th Street, 8th Avenue. According to the draft OCP, the lot is designated as low-rise apartment and we are proposing a six-story apartment with two-story condos at the first two levels of the building. We had a PIM, Public Information Meeting, was held on July 11, 2020, and there were seven guests attended. There were questions from the public about, about, will the developer consider a four-story building? Will the building for sale or rental? Would the design be changed? Would the project be affordable? And what is the timeline of the project? The answer from the developer regarding the four-story building is since the land cost is high, more unit in six-story building could bring the unit price down. Regarding the question, if there's any rental component, if the city does not have any requirement for rental, the developer will sell certified units. Regarding the question, if the design will be changed, the design at that time was very preliminary and the final design will be presented at the public hearing, which is now. Regarding the question about affordability, since the city will be increasing the UPA, higher UPA means more and smaller unit. Smaller unit will be more affordable. And lastly, regarding the question about timing of the project, and it will take one and a half to two years for DP and EP before starting construction, and that could be pre-sale for the project. Regarding the concept of the site planning and architecture, the building will be orientated along the street. There will be a two-story, two-timehouse unit with direct access from the streets. Two-story base with level five and six further setback to reduce the building mass from the street. And then this space will be provided at the back of the unit and on the rooftop. Regarding some basic project data, the site area is about 28,000 square feet and we are proposing 2.1 FAR and 105 UPA. There will be 68 units in which there are 11 three-bedroom condos unit at grade, 41 one-bedroom unit, and 16 two-bedroom units. Three of the unit will be adaptable for aging and handicapped people. This is the basement parking level, which is half-level below grade. There are 69 residential parking, including six handicap spaces. All parking are pre-conduit for future EV chargers. From the ATP comment, we have followed the comment to shift the accessible parking space closer to the elevator. It's indicated in the red line there. This is the level one plan. There are 11 two-story condos unit facing 207th Street and the south lane on the right-hand side. There are 20 residential parking space behind the condos and 10 of them are equipped with EV chargers and 10 of them are pre-conduit. There will be 12 visitor parking located at grade of the east lane, which is at the top of this diagram, and one corner space located at the intersection of south and east lane, which is at the top right corner of this diagram. Residential entrance is located at the southeast corner and it is elevated and assessed by RAM, which is at the top or the bottom right-hand corner of this diagram. From the ATP comment, it was suggested to move the garbage room, which was at the driveway entrance for the south, which is highlighted in the red line here. This will improve the visibility of the driveway entrance and will provide more convenient access from the building to the garbage room. There are some set tech issues, some tech tech features, which is crime prevention through environmental design. At the basement level, the basement parking level, the parking and entry gate are equipped with CCTV and key fob system. We have see-through gate with remote control provided at the pocket entrances with no cover alcove above. The walls in the pocket are painted in white and well illuminated. Pocket elevator lobby is enclosed with half-height glass to increase visibility and security. At level one, the building access is also encrypted with CCTV and key fob system and the building lobby and entry best-of-view are enclosed with glass to increase visibility and security. Condos are elevated and gated and anti-graffiti coating will be applied on the exterior wall. In general, wood grain feature will be added on all around the building, which is used to create visual interest or attract people to put eyes on the building. Exterior lighting will be located at pedestrian scale heights. This is the level two. And these are the second level of the condos in the front. And the indoor amenity space with cover and open air outdoor amenity space located at the back. And from the ATP comment, it was suggested to add seating near the play structure and larger play structure was suggested in the outdoor amenity space. This is level three and level four, and they are just simple apartment units. And level five and level six, you can see the building, the foreplay has been set back from the lower floor to reduce the building mass. From the ATP comment, there were some windows still height at the elevator lobby or suggest to raise up to avoid, to adjust the privacy issue to the residential unit, which could be seen through the window of the elevator lobby. This is the rooftop level and there's a landscape view that at the south end, which is on the right-hand side of this diagram. From the ATP comment, enclosed elevator lobby with large glass was suggested to provide better protection of the elevator. A gola has been suggested to cover the seating area and amenity space has been enlarged and rough in for future solar panel has been added, which is in the left-hand side of the diagram. And there are certain sustainability features, which is including to incorporate the light pollution reduction principle, provide recycle facility, incorporate construction recycle plan, will incorporate stormwater management plan with the civil engineer, and we will achieve energy performance of 25% better than the national energy code. We'll have rough in for future solar panel on the rooftop. And then we will reduce the urban heat island effect by green spaces. We'll be using draft current plants and we're using the dual flush toilet. And we have including bike parking. And of course, we are including the EV charger and the conduit for the future EV chargers. And we also included diversity of housing type, which is condos and apartment and different unit sizes from one bedroom to three bedroom. And at the corner of the site, we have created a community called Corner Plaza for the public. This is the south elevation facing 203th Street, 207th Street, sorry. The facade is composed of two-story condos expression with a four-story major mass with the level five and level six setback to reduce the building mass. From the ATP panel, engine feature has been suggested to be more prominent by racing into a one-and-a-half-story tall feature. And also the build-up accent feature and walls of the entrance lobby has been changed to using more wood color aluminum cladding. And this is the detail of the wood color aluminum cladding at the entrance and the build-up accent feature. This is a side elevation facing the south lane and the cladding material is fiber cement board. Have a cement panel accent with aluminum siding. Brick veneer will be cladded on the exposed concrete wall and landscape plonchers. The color palette is contemporary gray tone accent with warm wood grain aluminum siding. This is the rear elevation facing the east lane from the ATP comment. As I mentioned, the garbage room was suggested to move to south, which is highlighted in the red line. And the design had to modify by using alternating steel panel to reduce the solid wall area feeling. This is the side elevation facing the north property line. This is the 3D wheel along the north of 207th Street, looking from the north to the building. This is the 3D wheel from the corner of the south and east lane facing south. This is the 3D wheel from the, from the north of the east lane, looking from the north, from the lane of the building. And lastly, this is the 3D wheel at the corner of 207th and South Lane. And as a summary, so we have the two-story condo expression, four-story basic building mass with the upper floor, fifth and sixth floor setback to reduce the mass. The corner, which is, you can see clearly, is the entry feature which has been raised to one-and-a-half-story height for more prominent expression. And the condos are elevated, sorry, and the entries are elevated and accessed by RAM. And entrance door is transparent for settec reason. Condos are elevated and gated. And we have contemporary gray tone and wood grain alone decided at accent. And the terrace plant along the street are cluttered with aluminum veneer, sorry, kind of with brick veneer to cover the concrete. And the rest is the landscape plan. And if there's any landscape question, the landscape architect is standing by to answer any question from landscape, if there's any. So this is the ending of my presentation.
Thank you very much. Did anybody from council have any questions? Counselor Pahal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe this is the wrong time to bring it up, but I just had a question from the public comment from TransLink. Would it be possible to ask staff for some clarification on that now or should I wait until another period? I'm assuming I can go ahead. So maybe, the TransLink noted that they could complement the existing active transportation facilities that are being provided. And they mentioned cost sharing. So I was wondering if staff could clarify beyond the bike parking, is there anything extra in this particular development or along the frontage?
Good evening.
Yes.
Yeah, you could, okay, if you want to go ahead, please. Oh. I'm gonna continue then. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. This area is not, is a local road and is not in the proposed bike network in the city. And we don't have any plan for having bike lanes along 207 in here. It's gonna be a shared kind of bike and car lane. And with regards to the TransLink and MBN, we have other projects around that area, not in this very specific area. And we have applied for grants. One is at the 208 and another one, Fraser Highway, that one-way strip. And which is based on that, TransLink's different grant programs, but not in this particular area.
Thanks, and just for clarity then, because TransLink may have been thinking about something else. They just noted, let me just read it here. Cycling and pedestrian improvements proposed by the developer could potentially be complemented. So is there anything that the developer is proposing here beyond the regular sidewalk we would find on a local street and the regular sort of bike block up?
We haven't received any engineering drawings for off-site yet, but we will be working with the developer and we have enough room, probably at this stage, which is very preliminary, we are thinking of adding more green spaces and landscaping as opposed to bike lane, like I said, because it is an area that on both sides there are not dedicated bike lanes. It doesn't make sense to require bike lane in here.
For sure. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any speakers here that, anyone in attendance electronically to speak to the bylaw 3159?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there are no members of the public in attendance.
Okay, so a call for a second time for speakers to bylaw 3159.
No speakers?
Third and final time for speakers for bylaw 3159.
No speakers.
Okay. All right. Okay, and is there any other members of council that have questions? Counselor Wallace?
Yeah, I'm intrigued by the extra green space or the green space that was mentioned that could be a possibility, but since the landscape architect is here, could we hear a little bit about the landscaping?
Sorry, pressed the wrong button. Hi, I'm Angie Landscape Architects. Matthew touched a little bit on the landscape. We've tried to use, or I just have to pull up my drawing. On the ground floor, there is individual patios with hedge and flowering shrubs in front that cascade down to the sidewalk. We have various roof deck amenity spaces that have, one on the top floor has outdoor patio space and overhead arbor with some lighting and barbecue area. The other outdoor spaces has a small child's play area. We've made it a little bit larger than what we had on the ATP. The one shown on the ATP package. But given the space and the amount of safety area that we have to have around pieces, you know, it's not able to have anything of real significance, but it's still a piece that allows children to play when they're out there with their parents, visiting with other people or by themselves. The ground floor is mostly the patios. Oh, sorry, we have another small patio space on the north of the project. It's just a seating and social gathering area. We have a few small planters there that could be used for the residents to use as garden plots. Any questions?
No, thank you, I was just, if I could go ask a question to the mayor. Just in regards to, you had mentioned the planters. How many planters are there for, you know, you suggested? Just in regards to, you can mention the, the planters, how many planters are there for, you know, you suggested for. People to use as garden planters?
There's show nine.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you for the clarification. Go ahead, Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to provide a little bit more context in relation to the TransLink comment. As council knows with the draft Nickelmeckel River District Neighborhood Plan. There's proposed improvements to the trail network just south of the proposed development and through the OCP and the Nickelmeckel Plan. As the area in, around this, this application, of course, the application has to provide improved frontage. Consistent with what engineering will be looking for and what Mr. Gill was talking about, but there'll also be other improvements as, as other properties. Redevelop over time and, and that's something we want to make sure there's a clear vision for in the OCP and the Nickelmeckel Plan. And as I mentioned before, this, this application does fit well into the land use context for that.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions regarding bylaw three one five nine? Okay, seen none, thank you very much for that. And we will move on to bylaw three one six zero zoning amendment bylaw and development permit number zero seven dash twenty. And I believe Mr. Johansson, did you want to speak to this as well, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be quite brief. I did detail the application with the, the previous bylaw, but yes, this rezoning is for a proposed six-story sixty-eight unit development. With a minor visitor parking variance and that about sums it up.
And. And do we have someone to speak to the proposed rezoning? Do we have someone to speak to the proposed rezoning?
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may, or perhaps Mr. Chang could just speak briefly to the rezoning? The applicant?
Um, we are, we are resuming into, according to the, the draft OCP, which will be the OCP bylaw. I think it will be like a CD bylaw, right? It'll be custom-made for these projects and. Yeah, I think it's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm getting feedback. Is everybody hearing that? Better now? Okay, Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise if there's anyone in attendance electronically at this meeting who wishes to speak to this bylaw three one six zero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is no public in attendance at this meeting, therefore no speakers.
All right, so a call for a second time for speakers on bylaw three one six zero. And I'll call a third and final time for speakers on bylaw three one six zero.
Thank you, no speakers.
Excellent. Seeing no speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding bylaw three one six zero? Okay, I don't see any hands. Double check and it was just those two. And no one has any further questions for the developer? So we are done with this then, so thank you very much. Can I have a mover in a second or to close the public hearing, please? Counselor Sturtevant, Counselor Pahal, all those in favor? Any opposed and that carries? So this public hearing is now closed. And these bylaws will come forward for consideration for a third reading at a future council meeting. So thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.